Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 18th Webster Board of Education meeting. Would you please stand and join us to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, may I please have a motion to move out of the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now out of the executive session. If you had a chance to take a look at the agenda, I am aware of one item change. We'd like to move Board Business Letter A, number four, up to number one. Are we okay with that change? Are there any other additions or corrections?
Wait, I thought we were moving it up to here.
No, we're just gonna move it up to A1.
Oh, okay.
All right, may I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, motion stands. We provide an opportunity to the public to address the board at this time, and we ask that any comments be brief, no longer than five minutes, and related to school matters. Personnel matters, whether directly or indirectly, will not be discussed in public. Personnel concerns can be addressed to the board in writing. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board Seeing none, we'll move on to our student liaisons. Welcome. Mary, do you want to go first?
Good evening, board members.
Hello.
Thank you for having me back this year as liaison from Webster Thomas. I'm looking forward to sharing all the happenings from the Titans. As we end our third week of school, our athletic teams are off and running. Girls and boys cross-country are both undefeated with a seven-and-zero record. The football team has a two-and-oh record, and on September 12th, their home opener served as a cancer awareness event. Cancer survivor and Titan senior Maddie Danowski sold awareness T-shirts that week. It was an amazing night. On October 14th, the football team will be honoring the 2004 championship team. Other records include boy soccer, who is four-and-two; girl soccer is four-one-one; girls tennis is five-and-three; field hockey is four-and-oh; swimming is two-and-oh; and girls volleyball is four-and-three. The athletic teams have also begun the community service projects. The boys soccer team volunteered with Friends of Webster Trails last Saturday. They worked on a new trail at Lake Road and Basket. The football team also volunteered at the House of Hope last Sunday, and the girls volleyball team is doing a coastal cleanup this weekend. Over the summer, our athletic department received the New York State Scholar recognition, meaning the entire program's average was greater than a ninety. This is the first time the district has received this award. A big congratulation goes out to Titan senior Laura Liu for being named National Merit Scholarship recipient. Our counseling center is already very busy with college representatives coming to meet with students. This fall, we will have over a hundred college representatives come to Thomas and share information about their programs and admissions department with students. We have seniors that are already applying. And finally, our spirit week is in the planning process and will be held the week of October 6th. It'll be a fun week to see which class will win the spirit stick. It looks like it's going to be another great year at Webster Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Lindsay?
Good evening, board members. I'm Lindsay Fayette. It's been a great start to the new year. Link Crew just conducted its annual kickball tournament under the lights for freshmen. It was held on Monday, and over sixty freshmen and Link Crew leaders showed up to play. This was yet another way for the freshmen to feel more comfortable in their transition from middle school to high school. As juniors are and seniors are looking into colleges that they might go to, the counseling center brings college admission counselors from different schools, and this year, we're very excited to have Yale and Harvard admission counselors come. Over twenty-five students are signed up to meet with these representatives. Usually, the college standardized testing is a dreaded thing for most students, but six of our students should feel a little less dreadful on that. Michael Incardona, Maria Kowalczek, Julia Wiseman, Peter Wood, Kyle Zhao, and Christopher Yee are National Merit Scholarship finalists. The scholarship is based off your PSAT and SAT scores, and to be finalists, you have to score at least two-hundred-and-one to two-twenty-two out of two-forty. And we are very proud of those six students. Out of forty-four ACT-tested graduates who also took the ACT plan in our school, the percentages meeting the ACT plan and ACT mathematics college readiness benchmarks were seventy-seven and eighty-nine percent. These percentages compared to forty-two and forty-four percent for the 2014 National ACT Plan and ACT matched sample. All that said, our scores were about twice as much as the national average. And thank you. Are there any questions?
Great, great job.
Thank you. Lisa, WTA?
Tonight, I would like to share that Writers &amp; Books is pleased to announce a community-wide discussion that is open to the public and intended to attract the widest possible audience to the forums, including parents, students, teachers, administrators, business leaders, elected officials, the media, and anyone who else would be interested in the future of our schools. On September 23rd, at 7:00 PM at East High School's forum room, the Common Core Is It Good for Public Schools?, a moot court trial. And then on October 8th, Rochester City School District Board of Education office at 7:00 PM, Teacher Tenure: Good or Bad for Education? October 22nd, at the Gates Library, How Do U.S. Schools and Students Stack Up Against Nations Around the World?, it's at 7:00 PM. And then again, at 7:00 PM on November 5th, at Nazareth College and the Otto Schultz Forum, Why Would Anybody Want to Be a Teacher Today? Followed by November 23rd, at 2:00 PM at the Kate Gleason Auditorium Central Library, What is the Role of the Community in Providing Early Childhood Learning? And lastly, on December 3rd at 7:00 PM, in the Eisenhardt Auditorium at the Rochester Museum and Science Center, What Makes Us a Good School? These will be thought-provoking and interesting forums, and we encourage everyone to attend. Any questions?
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see PTSA. No. So we'll move on. Tom Strinning is a former Webster superintendent of schools who would like to celebrate Jim Fraschera's tenure as Chief Financial Officer. Now, Jim will be retiring in October, but Tom unfortunately will not be in Webster at that time, and he has asked if he could say a few words recognizing Jim's accomplishment. And so, Tom, the floor is yours.
First of all, thank you for having us. It's a delight to be back, second time in eight years, and I'm not making a habit of this, but thank you. And I'll be introducing John in a moment, but I did, by way of background, want to explain why we're here tonight. About a month ago, I was having a conversation with Carm, and we were talking about all the happenings since I left, just over the last few years in the district type of thing. And the conversation led to a discussion about the financial crisis in 2008, 2009, the chaos that was out there. And I said, you know, looking at it from the outside, you sort of feel like everything was okay. It didn't seem like it was there, you know? The seas were roiling, the federal government was going down the tubes in terms of financial support, the state government was crashing. I mean, it was really a very, very difficult time, in fact, probably one of the worst in seventy-five years, no question about it. And I said, but it seemed okay. And we got into that conversation, and I got the sense from Carm that there was real stress in the bridge, so to speak, in terms of what was going to happen, how they were going to do it, but there was a determination to keep it calm. And I know from my experiences as a superintendent here that you probably had a thought at some point, it'll be okay, Jim is there. And you think about all those discussions about fund balances and should we have them, not have them, what should we do about them, and his patience about explaining, thinking in three-to-five-year terms and stuff like that. But as we do the presentation tonight, I just think about that, it'll be okay, Jim is there. We've all had that experience. So, that led me thinking about the last thirty years, 1984 to now. And I couldn't go any further without thinking about John Bodak, too, because sort of the three of us, in different ways, in our different jobs, all in a way, linked professionally, grew up together, and did so much together. And this gentleman here retired several years ago, as many of you know, as clerk of the works. Some of you might not know him as well. And just one story to put in perspective, the kind of stuff he did for us along the way, and the things that he did for Jim and with Jim, was amazing. Willink was to open, and I know some of you were there with us on Labor Day, walking through the building that was not finished, wasn't ready, could have, people were saying, it's not going to open, it's not going to open. Jim said, don't worry about it. He said, it'll happen. And I'm going through the building on that Monday before Labor Day, and they're laying carpet in the library, and I go up to one of the workmen there, actually, the guy who was supervising it. He was the contractor for the carpeting, and I said, thank you so much for coming in to do this. And he said, don't thank me. He said, thank John Bodak. If he didn't ask me, I wouldn't be here. Just to give you a sense of what this team of people did over a period of time. So John's going to talk after this little video clip and have a little presentation for Jim as well. The then and the now. Do you recognize this young man?
Oh, my gosh. That's where some allegiance is.
Hey, those were the days when we could have some hair. It was an amazing thing to think about, to look back, and I thank Paul and Lynn Barton at the Webster Museum for helping me put me some pictures together and things along the way, and for the video clip and things. Look at the difference in the time. And think about our buildings during this time and all the things that have happened in this district. And I will just, on a personal note, before we get into the things that Jim did, my respect for him and work came about over the years. Picture, new superintendent walks in to his job in 1999, longstanding issue with teacher negotiation contract, I mean, really bitter, negative, three-year, hostile, not very good on both sides. It was no one blame versus the other, it was just not good. A $48 million bond project that just passed, and we were told by the architects it was going to cost somewhere over $60 million if you really wanted to do it and get it done the right way type of a thing. And the lawsuit from Xerox just had been, the judge mandated, gave us like sixty to ninety days to reach a settlement, or he would impose one, and the pending figure was something like $21 million as I remember it. And you're new on the job. Thank God I got to work with him for years before that, because I knew that somehow this would all work out, and it did. But I will tell you, that thought that you had about, well, Jim's there, I had, and I knew it made a difference. And just being able to rely on that was a really good thing for me personally, and I've always appreciated that very, very much. It also hit me at that time that when you think about the journey that we've made as a district, it really comes down to not just buildings, not just grounds, but the quality of our instructional program in particular, and the funding of it, and what we've done with it. You think about how his job has expanded over the years. When we, back in the eighties, this is eighty-four and stuff, we were still downsizing schools. We were closing Spry, where things were not good at that time. Then all of a sudden, we're in a swing, and we're upgrading, and we're moving our schools with tremendous growth relative to the rest of the county. That was amazing. Most business managers have to deal with the regular routine things, the maintenance of the buildings. Add on to that the things that were happening in Webster in terms of multiple contract negotiations. We were really dealing with some crippling liability and property insurance cost issues at the time, state funding shortages. I think it was ten percent in nineteen ninety-something, Quomber was going to take it out, was also going to shift the teacher retirement system, take monies out of that. The crisis of the times, nothing to like 2008, but there. The limited technology we had in the buildings, the aging cramped facilities. The thing that amazes me, you go back in these buildings now, all the buildings are like they're getting younger, and somehow, I wish I was sort of doing the same thing, but it doesn't quite seem to work that way. But anyway, surging healthcare costs, unbelievable litigation issues before us, and Jim's role making it all happen. And it went well beyond management to creative solutions. If you think about that liability stuff, we got in on the ground floor of NYSER, which is a New York State insurance reciprocal. We weren't one of the founding members, but Jim got us in early and became a Board of Director member, president of the association, helped save the district millions of dollars in insurance costs. The Health Consortium, tens of millions of dollars. Again, a founding member of what that was type of a thing. The bond development and management of those bonds over the years, not just roofs, buildings, facilities, support systems, technology, all of the things, and the cash flow that goes with that type of a thing that he made look simple, at least the outside. The infrastructure, property management, the classrooms for art, music, the new auditoriums, all of those things that he had a hand in in terms of where he went. And that's not to say that we didn't have discussions or live discussions along the way, but I really gained an appreciation for Jim when I realized he had such Sinatra qualities. When you think about it, he really is the chairman of the board of financial stuff, but like Sinatra, he, who was very exacting about the music, the tone, the pitch, the articulation, everything. If you ever watched Jim's figures of working on numbers or things like that, the precision that comes forward is truly amazing. It's spectacular, actually. The same thing in his writing. If you've watched his writing from that young fellow up there to going through, the detail in which he writes and the precision in which he takes, and the thoughtfulness he does to reflect what people are saying, what they need to hear, and then where it goes. That doesn't happen by accident. That's thought, that's deliberate, that's being the chairman of the board and making sure it gets done. And the biggest lesson he taught me was to stay out of his way when it's his territory. That's not a joke, that's true, and it really worked well. Sometimes we didn't know how the territory went. But anyway, thinking all those things, we have this video clip. Just think about what he did over that time period. It's only about a three-minute clip. I'd like you to just take a little bit of time here, and Paul, I think, is going to hit it for us and get it going.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight on what I think is a special occasion. Pastor Lieutenant Tom Strinning asked me to join him in paying tribute to a special person who has served the Webster School District for many years. Many of you do not know me, but I've spent many years serving the school district. In the forty-plus years of being part of Webster, I've held many titles, student, mechanic, foreman, facilities manager, construction manager. Throughout these years, I've had the pleasure to meet, work for, and work with many that stood above the crowd. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize one of those individuals, Jim Fraschera. Mr. Fraschera has had only one title for the many years he has served Webster, financial manager. Jim wore many hats besides this title to me. It was supervisor, coworker, friend, and leader. If you can imagine how hard it is to run a household budget, try running a school district. Jim achieved this feat for many years and proved it can be done. The district will have a large void to fill with his retirement and will be missed by many. Jim, you have been the foundation of a financially stable district for many years. Thank you for your dedication. With that thought, I would like to present you with a small remembrance token of the district, especially the Spry Building. The package contains a brick from the foundation of the Spry chimney. Both serve as a remembrance of the foundation you and the chimney stood for many years. Though the chimney is gone and as you retire, the legacy will live on. Thank you.
Just in closing, we all know that Webster would be a very good place without any one of us, but I think we can all agree that it's been a much, much better place because of Jim Fraschera. So, Jim, thank you very much. And this is just a personal thing to you for me. Thank you. Remember that chimney, Sue?
No.
Well, just the beginning of celebrations for you, Jim. All right, we are going to move on, unless you want to say something now, or you want to wait?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen and Tom, and everyone else.
All right, Carm, you have some update information for us.
So, we wanted to give a brief presentation on our enrollment, especially after three weeks of school. What does our enrollment look like? What are our trends look like? And are there any things that we sort of need to look at for the future, either short-term or long-term? So, this first slide, and you guys have your packet in front of you, wanted to look at the last five years enrollment comparison. And when we look at the K-5, so if you just look at that column, you can see that the K-5 has been relatively steady. We've decreased by seventy-eight students over the last five years, so approximately, you know, fifteen kids per year. It's about a two percent decrease. When you look at 6-8, the middle school, that has really been steady. I mean, we went from 2042 to 2022. And then, when you look at the high school enrollment over the last five years, you see a decrease of around eight percent, 2996 to 2754. And when you take all of this together and you look at the total enrollment in Webster over the last five years, you see a relatively steady, certainly compared to other districts as well, but it certainly isn't going up, and it has been maintained. It's about a three percent decrease from 8890 to 8575. When we delve into this a little bit deeper, let's look at our last five years of kindergarten enrollment comparison. You can see that this really has stayed relatively the same from 2010-11. You can see, we went from 541 in 2010 to 549 in the fall of 2014. Now, last year, we did have a spike. We went up over 600. That was our very first year of full-day K. But it appears to be, it could be a one-year blip, because obviously, right now, we're down to where we were five years ago. When you then look at grades one-five, wanted to show you that, you know, there's a bunch of bars up here, but for the most part, we are relatively steady at 620 kids per grade level. When you average all those out, we're at approximately 620. Now, remember that number, because you're going to see that that number increases for each level that we examine. So, we go from 620, approximately 620. Thanks, Paul. And then, one of the questions that you had asked earlier on was, when we look at enrollment in the elementary, and we know that for some of our kids across the district, when certain grade levels have reached their enrollment caps in certain buildings, then the new registrants that come in, usually in August, can't go to their home school. So, how many children is that affecting? And when we look at this next slide, you can see that the number of elementary students that have been capped out, that are no longer attending class within their home school, and usually, it's a one-year period. I have data from the last three years. So, you know, a couple of years ago, there were eighteen students that were not going to their home school. And last year, it was large. It was forty-one. And basically, that was due mostly to the full-day K, because we had actually reached our limit at two of our buildings. Plank South, I think, was capped. Plank South, I think, was capped, and I think Clem South was, and I'm not exactly sure. But many of those forty-one, I think nearly half of them were kindergartners. And this year, we're down to ten. So, again, we'd love to keep our kids in their home school, but we also know that there are times where, instead of adding a new teacher at a building, we'll just have our new registrants go to another building close by for one year. So, when we look at the next slide, so 6-8, when we look at these numbers, grade 6-8, the average there is 674 students per grade level for this year, for 1415. That's fifty more than grades 1-5, and some reasons behind that. Many of our, when a family decides to send their children to a private or parochial school, many times, that decision is for elementary. And when their child gets to sixth grade, many times, they'll come back to either Spry or Willink. So, part of that reason, part of that is the reason for the jump of fifty students per grade level when you compare that to elementary. When you look at high school, you go up a little bit more. So, we're averaging 674 in middle school, and we're averaging almost 690 this year per grade level, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade at the high school. But again, when you look at those numbers, you know, ninth grade has been relatively steady, right around 690, and tenth grade has gone down a little bit, as has eleventh and twelfth grade, certainly from last year, is down as well. So, what these graphs will tell you, again, they'll look at, all right, you know what? We are not, this isn't the mid-nineties to mid-aughts, where we are adding a hundred kids per year and nearly a thousand students in like an eight-year period. So, that's no longer happening. When we look at other enrollment comparison, we have the alternative in GED, UPK, those students that are out of district and those students that are also enrolled in both these programs. Those numbers have basically remained the same. UPK, we did add a second class, which is why we went up from eighteen thirty-two last year. Next slide. Wanted to show you Schrader versus Thomas in terms of enrollment over the last five years. And when you look at these numbers, you know, Schrader and Thomas were, when Thomas opened up in 2001, the fall of 2001, as a nine-ten building, and then it became a nine-ten eleven-twelve building, it was, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we knew that Thomas was probably going to have each year approximately a hundred students less than Schrader, just because of the physical space at Thomas. And when you look at the last five years, in a way, that sort of has held steady. Schrader has, on average, a hundred and one more students, or twenty-five kids per grade level, more than Thomas. But the numbers, again, for both high schools, from 2010 and 11 until today, have gone down approximately a hundred kids. So, there's that trend there. Next slide. Wanted to spend a little bit more time on the middle school, because there is a trend here that I think we need to keep on our radar and something that we may need to address. So, Spry and Willink, over the last five years, again, when Willink came on board, we knew that Willink's physical space and footprint was going to mean that less students would be at Willink than at Spry, and approximately a hundred less, very similar to Schrader and Thomas. So, when we look at these numbers, from 1011 through 1415, the average is sixty-nine students more at Spry than at Willink. That's the average. Now, what I want to bring to your attention is, this year, there are ninety more students at Spry than at Willink, and so it's the most disparate it's been, I guess, in the last five years. There was a time where Spry actually had more than a hundred more students. It was back in probably 2009, I think it was. But if we look at this next slide, this is where I think we need to have this on our radar. This is the projected Spry enrollment for next September, 2015. In grade five, right now, the number of fifth graders slated to go to Spry next year, there are ninety-eight more fifth graders slated to go to Spry next year than Willink. In sixth grade, right now, there are eighty more students at Spry than at Willink, and in seventh grade, there are thirty-seven more. So, next year, they're right, projected, it will be 215 more students at Spry than at Willink. We need to look at that number, and we need to make sure that we are prepared for that. And also, on our last slide, we may also want to look at what our division is at Clem South. We have, as you know, Plank North, Plank South, and State Road, all of those students go to Spry. The Clem's and Schlegel and DeWitt, sorry, Clem North, Schlegel, and DeWitt all go to Willink. Clem South has always been the split school, okay? Right now, just because of where kids are moving into and where the middle school population is growing and elementary population is growing, the current split right now at Clem South, seventy percent of their kids go to Spry and thirty percent go to Willink. This is what's driving some of our number, and will drive that number above 200 next year for Spry. So, what our goal has been in the past, and what I think we need to look at over the next three to five months, is attempting to get that split at Clem South back down to 55-45. Fifty-five percent of the kids going to Spry and forty-five going to Willink. And we'll do that basically by, at least it should be, one of our goals will be something similar to what we did two or three years ago, when we rebalanced certain neighborhoods. But we definitely, we cannot, I would imagine, we cannot continue this trend, because Spry will just, I mean, it would just be a little bit too hard to sustain that number and to sustain that disparate number. So, more information will be coming to you, and we'll be really looking at that Clem South piece as well. So, but we'll be able to share that with you over the next couple of months. Just want to make sure it was on your radar. And this was something, as we did the study, it sort of came up, and it was like, okay, this is something we need to, we definitely need to look at, okay? So...
I'm sure that's all reflected to, I don't know if it was a surprise or not, but in the staffing, too, like classroom size, numbers at the sixth-grade level at Spry compared to Willink?
Yeah, there's definitely a difference, Paul. Sixth grade and seventh grade at Spry, you're looking at probably three or four more kids per classroom. And because we team, as you know, as a former middle school guy, as you team, and you only have three teams, you really only have, you have three core teams, right? It is, it's really hard to, when you have a number of either a hundred more students or next year, perhaps 200 more students, and I think 200 will almost be unsustainable. You'll have to add a fourth team. And as you know, it's really hard to add that fourth team in a middle school, if you truly want to have a true team. So, we're going to have to definitely look at that. But in terms of the actual number of class size at Willink versus class size at Spry, I don't have the, I don't know the actual, like, is it twenty-seven at Spry versus twenty-four? But I know the difference is three or four.
Okay.
Yeah. Just talking with Dave and with Jim. Great question.
Just, I don't even know how to say this. You showed us why, but let's make sure we do a great job of communicating the why and the how...
The how. Absolutely.
To our parents.
Yep, you bet. That's why we need to start now and really have those meetings, perhaps sooner rather than later. But it's going to take us a while to get to that plan and...
No, but I'm just remembering the past.
Yep, yep, I agree. Sue?
Just a quick verification. So, it doesn't appear that our population is increasing at all, so you don't see any plans in the short term or relatively long term that we would need to add on to buildings or build an additional building?
Yeah, and looking at these numbers, Sue, unless we were to dramat, if we were to add UPK within our own buildings and not contract it out like we really do now...
Yeah.
We have seven UPK classrooms. We have two of them at Plank North, and the other five are at private daycare centers. So, unless that were to happen, and I can't imagine that we would do that, because the state's probably not going to give us that funding, no, our enrollment does not bear that out, the need for additions.
So, then, as far as projects and stuff, it would be more about maintaining our buildings than building new?
That would be...
Which is what we're doing now?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Mike, looks like you got a question?
So, what you're saying is, is the overall population of the district is actually declining, but parts of our district is changing, so it's increasing in one area and less in the other.
Correct, correct. You know, we have right now the area, Jim, across from Plank South, right? There's those neighborhoods near Plank South that are turning over. So, we went from neighborhoods with very few kids, elementary level, to now, Plank South went from really the smallest or the least enrolled building that we had three years ago to the most, the most students K-5 are now at Plank South with nearly 600 students. So, yes, when you look at the total number of students, Mike, across the district, we are steady or, you know, a relatively small decline. But when you look at individual buildings, I mean, you know, there are, Plank South has a hundred and ten more kids than Clem North, so...
There's not much you can do inside the building. Basically, you're going to shift kids to...
Correct, right, you know, and that's the other piece around, that's what we did three years ago to help limit the enrollment at Clem South and at Plank North. But, and it's hard to really predict in the future, though, in terms of when the other, when another neighborhood's going to turn over, and, you know, you can, so you can try to rebalance every two or three years, but sometimes, that's not the smartest way to go. Okay?
Just casually, I know we talked briefly about the home school enrollment and how that has, my memory tells me, has increased over the years. And I just wondered, do we have a sense if those children are homeschooled for their entire K-12, or do we see some of them coming over at the secondary level? And that could indeed impact our secondary school populations.
I don't have a definitive answer for you, but as, in my days as a principal, I know that when parents homeschool, many times, it's easier to homeschool at the elementary level, because we all understand the math at elementary and so on. But once the children got to middle school or high school age, it was just a little bit harder to do. So, they were definitely, there were less kids homeschooled for each grade level that progressed.
As they progressed.
Correct.
So, it's just another factor to keep in mind?
Correct, yeah. All right. Nope, this is now on to my superintendent's report. There are no more questions. So, the school year is off to a great start, and with that, I wanted to share with you what is going on in our district. I want to start by congratulating some of our high school students on being named National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, and our two high school liaisons had talked to us about that. So, from Webster-Schrader High School, congratulations to Mike Michael in Cardona, Maria Kowalczuk, Julia Weissman, Peter Wood, Kyle Zhao, and Christopher Yee. And from Webster-Thomas High School, Laura Lu has been named a National Merit Scholar semifinalist. So, just to give you a little perspective on what an accomplishment this is for these seven students. The 2014-15 semifinalists were chosen from an initial pool of 1.4 million students throughout the United States who took last year's PSAT. Our Webster student semifinalists are among 16,000 semifinalists nationwide, and of those 16,000, thirty-three are from the eight counties of the Buffalo area, the western New York area, and 51 are from the eight-county Rochester area. And we have seven out of those 51. Now, these students have to wait until the spring to find out whether they will be awarded any of the 7,600 finalist scholarships, and those 7,600 scholarships total $33 million. We'll be sure to keep you updated, but in the meantime, we are so proud of these seven students. Congratulations on a very prestigious achievement. Now, staying with our high schools for just a moment, I'm also proud to announce a huge musical honor for a Webster-Thomas senior vocal student. Lucia Rose Barone has been selected to perform at the national level in the National Association for Music Education's Honor Chorus in Nashville, Tennessee. So, congratulations to Lucia Rose. I'm not sure if any Webster student has ever had this honor before. And that brings me to another group of our talented student musicians who will represent Webster at the All-State Conference in early December. Thousands have auditioned for this honor across the state, and eight of our students were chosen to perform, while six have been named alternates. You see our Webster honorees named here. I wanted to also point out that Webster-Thomas High School's Taryn Scott has the rare honor of being selected to perform in two ensembles. And we all know firsthand how talented Taryn and Lucia Rose are, because they both sang for us during the opening day meeting. They were our soloists during that very last musical piece. If you would like to know when each group is performing for All-State during the December conference, visit our website at websterschools.org and click on the District News Headline section for all the details. And congratulations to all these wonderful musicians. Our elementary students also have a lot to celebrate. Parents of these students are probably well aware of their incredible energy level, but I wanted to let you all know about the impressive Top Ten showing for all of New York State, this is Top Ten in New York State, that our elementary students made during the American Heart Association's Jump Rope for Heart, Jump Rope for Heart and Hoops, and Hoops for Heart event. So, Plank Road South, they ranked first in all of New York State for the total amount raised for the combined Jump Rope and the Hoops for Heart. They raised over $25,000. And State Road Elementary, they ranked sixth overall, and they collected, actually, they collected just $700 less than Plank South, so almost $25,000. And the teams, the team of students from Clem Road South ranked ninth overall with over $21,000 raised for the Jump Rope for Heart event. Just incredible. So, when you look, when you add all those up, it's nearly $75,000 for the American Heart Association. Congratulations to those three schools. Yes, ma'am?
Was that basketball?
That was basketball. No, it was basketball.
Just wondering.
Okay, it was basketball. Hula hoops, that'd be a good one, Ms. Casey, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay.
How many hours can you hula hoop?
Yep, maybe we can get the principals...
Just wondering.
How many seconds?
That's right. We can ask the principals to do that. So, while I'm on the subject of money, I wanted to share a message that many of you may have seen in last week's Webster Post and Herald. It was in the column that I wrote, "Your school tax bills," hate to tell you this, but your school tax bills came in the mail recently, and those of us who live in Webster, in the actual, the town of Webster, saw a very modest 0.22% increase in the tax rate approved by our Board of Education in early August. 0.22. We had thought it was going to be 1.67, and because of some really good financial news, that rate went actually down to 0.22. And school district residents who live in Penfield, which represents about 20%, I think, 20 or 23% Jim, of our school, of our students, school district residents who live in Penfield actually saw their rate decrease by 0.89%. And those district residents who live in Walworth in Ontario, their taxes also went down by nearly 1%. So, I just want to reiterate that this is positive news for our community and our students, and I look forward to working with Webster Town Supervisor Ryan... and I look forward to working with Webster Town Supervisor Ron Nesbit and Webster Village Mayor John Cahill, as we all share that same sense of responsibility to our kids and families, and we also know that we need to continue to be good financial stewards of your tax dollars. And lastly, I'd like to share an update on our technological challenges that we've been dealing with at the bus garage. Our ability to look at and change bus routes have been severely hampered since late August. And you've heard me say this at my last, during my last superintendent's report, some of you got phone calls from me as well. So we've had to do much of this, of the changing and the design of these routes by hand. This manual procedure is extremely time-consuming and makes it very hard to quickly make changes when trying to respond to a family's request to change a current bus stop. And on top of this, we've also been dealing with a phone system that has presented its own set of gremlins and challenges. So, we certainly appreciate your patience and your understanding as we continue to move forward with both of these issues. And if you continue to have issues, please email myself or Mrs. Rowe, Mr. Fashara, and we will attempt to get back to you within 24 hours. So that ends my report.
Thank you, Carmen. We'll now move into our board business, and Carmen, I think you're going to introduce us to Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Brian Freeman, can you come on up? Sit right in front there. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to introduce you to Mr. Brian Freeman. Brian has, and Brian will be recommended to the board as our new Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, or for Business. And Brian went through a very rigorous interview process that lasted over, probably, certainly over a month, four different rounds. Thank you to Tom Nusbecca for helping out on that, during that process. Mr. Freeman is a 1996 graduate of Webster High School in the Schrader Building, and we are incredibly lucky to be able to recommend Mr. Freeman for your consideration for this newest, for the Assistant Superintendent's position. He is a former teacher. He taught for seven years as a special ed teacher in Rush Henrietta. And for the last five or six years, he has been a business official at East Aronique with Mr. Abbott. And also, he was the shared business official for McGraw and also Cincinnatus. And this last year, he's been at Cortland, Cortland City. So for every single person that we talked to and every reference that we checked and we went, when we did a site visit, they all talked about the pragmatism of Mr. Freeman, his sense of humor, and as well as his ability to think out of the box and really help a few districts that were under some financial distress. And Mr. Freeman helped, helped them get to a much better place. So he is here with his wife Courtney. Thank you, Courtney, for escorting your husband and making sure he didn't get lost. They have a beautiful son in pre-K, and I know that over the next few months, he'll be looking for a place here in Webster, and, because I know your mom is still, still right here in Webster, and I know you had dinner with her as well tonight. So Brian, welcome to Webster. And before the board acts on your, on your formal appointment, would you, do you have anything you'd like to say or share?
I would just, thank you for the warm welcome back home tonight. And I guess, the only thing I could really say is I'm just honored to come home and get the opportunity, because really, everything started for me here at Webster. The opportunity I got in high school at Schrader, when there was just one high school, so that would probably take me some time to adjust to-
(laughing)
...was tremendous, and it really helped springboard me onto college. And it's just such an honor to be able to come back and maybe impact future generations that ensure that they have the same opportunities that I did when I was here. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Great. All right. Yes, if we could act on it now, that'd be great.
May we have a motion, please, to accept the recommendation of the super, interim superintendent, of Brian Freeman as the Assistant Superintendent for Business, please?
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome, Brian.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman will begin near the end of August, sorry, near the end of October,[911.32][911.32](laughing) near the end of October. And I know that he and Jim have already been in contact, and will be talking about some transition days as well. So, congratulations, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
All right, we'll move on to our New York School Board voting delegate. Since Ann will be attending, I think it's only appropriate that we nominate Ann to be our voting delegate.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion there, Ann?
No, happy to do it.
(laughing) All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ann, you are our delegate, and the card that you need to get into-
Right. Very good, thank you.
Cindy has. Okay, now, to help out Ann, we need to take a look at the New York State School Board Resolutions. If it's okay with the rest of the board, what I would like to do is just to introduce each of the resolutions, and because of Tom's position, I'll let Tom kind of explain the thinking, and then we'll just kind of discuss whether we approve or disapprove of the resolution. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
All right, so our first resolution that we're looking at is cultural diversity, which is encouraging school boards to develop successful strategies for integrating respect for cultural differences into the educational experience.
If I could, Mr. President, I'd like to give just a little bit of background before we go through these, so you could understand why so many of the resolutions look like the New York State Board of, School Board Association's Board of Directors is putting these forward. Traditionally, in the past, those were put forward by individual districts and then voted on at the Delegate Assembly Business Meeting, which is held every year as part of the state convention. Earlier in the year, probably just a little bit after the previous convention and into the spring, they start to ask questions of the school boards, what issues are out there that have a statewide implication? And what they do is they poll the entire membership of the School Board Association. So we're talking about 4,800 board members and about 670 districts that are members. And from that, this list of consideration, resolutions for consideration were brought forward, and based on that, they, not necessarily Pareto voted, but they take a look at these and say, okay, how can we put together a statement in support of these, because these appear to have state recognition and are being put forward at the state level? Just to let you know, every one of these received 2/3 vote based on the individual respondents. So if you had 600 respondents to a particular question or bringing this up, 400 of them would have voted in favor of something like this. So in each one, there's what we call a supermajority involved there. So each of these were supporting different activities, and the first one was diversity for not only the students and bringing them forward to say, you know, the community you're going to go into is not your individual district anymore, it's going to be a much more global atmosphere that you'll leave, once you leave high school. And to try to understand those diversities and diversities of thought when you're going forward, it was very important to bring that forward. So that's just kind of the background there. There were three others that you'll see later on, 11, 12, and 13, that were not recommended, but that doesn't mean they won't be adopted. Each of these school districts could ask for support on the floor, or maybe come up with another way to show their support, and it's up to them to be able to present at the convention, at the resolutions meeting, and hopefully get support of the membership that is there voting. And then based on that, we develop a booklet that we present to the legislature to say these resolutions were passed by the business meeting at the convention, and these are things that we will present to every legislator, every senator, their staff members, so that as we go forward in developing budgets, these are things that we would like to either adjust to current law or present something new in legislation that would assist the districts helping the students. Thank you for that time.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone opposed to the first resolution of cultural diversity? Seeing none, I'll move on to number two, which was the membership dues. If I can recall, I think membership dues have been frozen for the last few years, and this resolution is calling for the fact that the dues will be based upon the previous year's cost plus an adjustment, which is either 4% or 120% of the consumer index.
That's correct. And actually, they've been in effect now for two years. I think they were frozen for two or three years, and then they thawed, but they had to put the new dates in there. So basically, it's adjustment to a current bylaw.
Anyone opposed to number two? Okay. The third one is supporting regional BOC's information centers that can accommodate storage for student data.
This is basically done because of a request, just so everybody knows, there was very much concern about security and the cloud, and where things were going to go with some of the other things, the RICS, which are basically run by our BOCs, handled by our BOCs, with the proper data storage capacity, things would be able to hold the information and supply them to SCD as needed.
But you don't have to, it's just available-
It's available to you. It's available if you wish to.
Right.
But with all the new data that the state wants, there are certain districts that just don't have the server capacity.
Right.
So this is another alternative for in bloom?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone opposed to number three? All right, I'll move on to four. This is a resolution supporting state aid for professional development. You know, in many cases, we are waiting patiently for the state to give us the resources, created resources, and let's be honest, we need the resources to prepare our staff so we can design our curriculum. And in many cases, we have to customize those materials that have been provided by the state. And in order to truly engage our students as well as our parents, the state really needs to support the funding so that we can get this professional development done. That was my two cents, sorry. I should let you guys talk first. Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll move on to number five. This resolution would support funding of full-day kindergarten, and to sustain the funding for full-day kindergarten. I think that's a big, sustain, that's a big one.
And the next one is just pre-K.
And pre-K. So is there any opposition to the full-day or pre-kindergarten? All right, we'll move on to number seven. This is opposed to the state funding designated education bonuses. It says opposed. Mike, you've got a question?
No, I think I understand that.
Anyone in favor of this one?
In opposing it, you mean, or in favor of-
To favor funding of educational bonuses. All right, we move on. The eighth resolution is supporting cap relief for distressed districts. Now, this would allow districts, particularly school districts that were designated financially distressed, to pass a budget that exceeds the property cap by a simple majority. Now, if you remember, in order to go past the property cap, you need a 60% majority.
If I could just ask a question to Jim. The designation of distressed district, that's a specific definition, is that correct? Okay.
The state has a rating of-
Right.
Districts.
So it's not an arbitrary, it's a, it's a formula that they use? Okay.
Yes. Jim, do you recall when last year they put out that list, how many there were statewide? Out of the 700 or so districts? I would say there were 50, and there were quite a few. Yeah, there were quite a few. I wasn't sure if it was 10% or not, but it was up there. Whether they revise how they're rating-
One little thing could cost you 20 to 30 points, and you would look like you're in, you're in not great shape for one little tick against you, or whatever you want to call it. It's hard to understand the whole formula that they use, it really is. But I'm sure some of those districts that they're talking about are very, districts that have struggled and made serious cuts in their programs. Used all their fund balances, because why, every time you use a fund balance, your fund balances decrease, you get a check against you. Even if you have $30 million, if it goes down to 28, you get a check against you because your year-to-year change was negative.
Thank you.
Anyone in opposition to supporting the cap relief for distressed districts? All right. Supporting Common Core teacher certification alignment. This is really for the higher education, the universities, the colleges. No comments on this one? I do have a comment on this one. I, you know my speech about science and art, and I am very, very afraid that the state is just going to zero in on the science and forget all the pedagogical skills and the art skills that are necessary to really make education what we want it to be. And I know that's not their intent, but many times, there's unintended consequences of an action. And I don't see the state at all ever talking about the art of teaching.
So you're suggesting that we don't support this?
I, I understand why. You want your colleges to prepare the best that they can, and you want your teachers to know the content, but there's also that soft skills, that art, that I'm not sure-
I'm wondering, too, if we could get into the point of, is there enough time in the student teaching where they're actually in the classroom, watching an experienced mentor teacher, teaching, to pick up some of the skills you're talking about that is more the art? Sometimes it's, it's been accelerated through in some of those instances, and they don't get that time to observe.
Do we have a say in the kind of programs that exist out there to prepare our teachers?
This is what they're trying to do with this.
I just, I wonder, too, though, Mike, kind of to your thought, the current teachers are being given professional development, which you just supported up in number four, probably to teach Common Core curriculum. So why would we not want support to teach the teachers coming into the field, so that we don't have to spend as much time on professional development for that?
Mike, your point is, it's not so much you're against the resolution. I think-
I can see a balance.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's almost as though, okay, you know what, we can support the Common Core, making sure that our new teachers during their, during their college experience are becoming aware of the, of the Common Core, but also, also, being able to make sure that during their student-teacher experience or during their observation experience, because there is that practicum, that they're seeing the art, they're seeing, they're being exposed to some master teachers that show them the art of connecting with kids and building those relationships. So, and I think you can have both, but to Paul's point, it's, you still want to be able to, to have that, that theme of Common Core preparation.
Yeah, it'd be a different-
You'd be on a different bullet.
You know how I feel.
First of all, there is the briefing that I'll attend in Canandaigua in another week, so certainly we'll bring that concern up. And I, too, have a concern, understanding that the Pearson Corporation is the adjudicator for certified teachers in New York State. So if indeed Common Core training is going to be stressed, I think there is that risk. So I, I think what I'd like to suggest is, I'll take that concern to the Canandaigua conversation and then come back, because we will be meeting again before the convention the end of October.
Right, and you do meet that day of the convention in the morning. You could bring these concerns up about wording there, if it, if the people representing there, which is basically the folks that are on the Resolutions Committee, there's one from each area. Our gentleman is from Avon, that will be doing it for Area Two, but talk to them, and then they could always recommend a wording change-
Right.
-that could be put up on the screen prior to the vote, if in fact- prior to the vote, if in fact, there's information you learn, or you're able to sway the discussion.
Number ten is supporting the use of student performance in the APPR. Comments about that one? Because?
Well, I oppose it because of the poor implementation of Common Core in New York State. I oppose it because of the implementation of special-need kids into classrooms out of the BOCs program that our teachers are now facing to bring up. I don't think it's a fair tool to use for our teachers. I think it's, my understanding is, it came out to kind of offset or balance out tenure, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe I am, but I don't think it's a fair assessment and judgment. I do, I oppose it.
Tom, we might need some help here. Is this asking, if I remember, APPR is a negotiated situation between the district and the teachers of that district.
Right, that was part of the...
In every, in every...
Every district.
But is this resolution implying that it's only going to be test scores that are used in the APPR?
That's a point of clarification you might have to ask. That didn't come through. It just said that it was going to be using...
Because if it is just test scores, I agree with Mike, that's...
Right, there's got to be other ways to be able to judge the ability of a teacher.
When you agree on something but don't fully understand the ramifications, I think that's what's kind of happened here, if my understanding is correct. And so now, it's hindsight, we're saying, hey, what did we get ourselves into? So as far as the teachers, I, I think that was maybe an error at first, and I think that's something that we should oppose. I don't think that should be out there.
You got that in?
I did.
Paul, any comments on that one?
No, Mike's one of the good points.
I'd like more information on it, too, though. I don't really know how far, because there's different parts to the APPR.
Right, and there's a point, too, that we've always given guidance in the past, and I know, Anne, as our clerk before you used to hear us say this, that, you know, if there's information that you learn, or clarification that you learn at the convention, in one of these pre-meetings, that may sway, we traditionally gave license to the person representing us to change that vote based on new information gained.
Okay.
Our next one, Jim might be able to help us on this one, because it's seeking modifications to the Affordable Care Act that eliminates the penalties on the employee health insurance when the premiums exceed the threshold, which has been established by law. So is that something that Webster has to worry about in the future?
Remember, this is a resolution not recommend, number eleven.
Correct. It's not recommended.
I would agree with it. Monroe County districts have created a plan to be compliant to the new laws. It's called the Bronze Plan, the Minimum Plan, and it'll be offered to everyone, which will eliminate us to even have to worry, I believe, worry about, the way that's written, worry about those penalties, because everyone will be offered insurance versus having to go back and look at, look back periods and provide it. So I believe in Monroe County, we are different than a lot of the other consortiums around the state that haven't really taken that step to make sure they protect their school districts. But I would really probably like to read or read a little bit more on it, but I would agree with it and oppose it.
All right. We'll move on. The next one, which is not recommended again, is changing the date of the annual school board and budget elections to November.
No, thank you.
I'd like to see it in November. I think it'd be a bigger turnout.
But how do you get a budget ready?
Yeah, but you can't get a budget.
Oh, well, it's true.
Timing dilemma.
That's like getting that card before the horse.
You'd have to change the financial year for the school district.
I think we talked about this once before, and I forgot that, but you're right.
I just don't want to see it politicized.
And it gets politicized.
You know, I mean...
It's a downstate district, so they don't raise their taxes until January, they don't tax in September.
And most of the time, Jim, you bring up a good point, you said it's supposed to be a downstate district in this particular case. We're looking to, to support things and possibly bring things forward to the legislature that has statewide effect and support, not only statewide support, but it would affect a majority of the districts versus just a couple. Not that we don't want, you know, if somebody brings it up and, hey, we have a different idea, and they come up with some suggestions, there have been things that have passed from the floor. But we'll see. That's why Anne has to go and vote.
And the last one, again, this is not recommended, is legislation that would exempt school districts from the New York Civil Service requirement that school districts reimburse school district retirees from the income-related Medicare adjustment allowance.
Until I read this, I've never heard of this. Does it sound familiar to you?
Yeah. And trying to follow along with the...
The description.
The description of it, it sounded like it was going back and forth.
Yeah, it's for the people that retire but then get another job, and they exceed the income on Medicaid and...
Medicare.
Medicare.
And then they have to pay a fee?
The school district was...
Pays their fee.
But that's, again, a downstate thing. I think I look at it with my ship a lot, because isn't that more downstate?
I mean, you're, there's a way to social security, fight push, there's no limit anywhere, and the others, so I'm not sure why...
It doesn't make sense.
Well, they just want to...
So, Anne, maybe you could...
You're thinking about Social Security and not Medicare, are you?
It says Medicare.
This is Medicare.
But, yeah, but there's a cap in Social Security on, right, but, correct, but I'm not sure about...
You want me to...
On Medicare, no.
You got it. Do you want to read the rationale?
You don't want me to read the rationale?
Yeah.
It's way too long.
Okay.
Section 167A of the New York Civil Service Law Record, no.
Jim, if you change your mind, you'll let me know.
I don't think he will be changing his mind on that one, because we don't understand it. All right. So I don't really think that needs action, because, Anne, you understand where the board sits on that. So we move to the treasures report. That's you, Jim.
You have the treasures report for July in front of you, and as you look at the receipts for the month of July, it was a very slow month in cash coming in. We received a hundred and seventy, almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in total, and most of that was in the form of accrued revenues that were booked in June, but money was received in July for those revenues recorded in June. In our reserves and savings accounts, we had just over thirty-nine million dollars at the end of the month. Page two, you have the treasures, federal aid capital, I'm sorry, you have school lunch, federal capital and trust and agency balances. And let's go to page three, when we look at our investments, and all of our money is invested, and you can see as interest rates continue to drop, our interest rates are in about point one to point one-five percent. And maybe just for you to, as you look at them, and because the rates are so low, the difference between the two banks, you may say, well, gee, why don't we have all our money in the bank that's giving us point one-five versus the bank that's giving us point zero-eight? Chase is the, our lead bank, and all of our accounts, all of our payroll, all of our reconciliations go through Chase, and we don't pay any fees to our bank. So we think of the thousands and thousands of dollars that that costs the bank in return for about point six or point seven percent interest on this money, we make out very well. And in the days when we're receiving three, four percent on our investments, yes, it made a big difference. And, you know, you had more cash flow, and you wanted to make sure your cash flows were, you didn't leave money in your checking account over the weekend because you were getting three or four percent interest on millions of dollars, but now you're getting less than a tenth of a percent on millions of dollars, and what these banks and services have gone to is really more checking accounts rather than money market accounts and CDs that we used to have. So I thought I'd point that out for you, as you've seen this, we never really talk about it, but our relationship is with the Chase Bank, and we do not pay for that relationship.
Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the treasures report? Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we move into our board business, school liaison. Anne, you want to start? Do you have anything to report? All right, I can move on.
No, it's okay. Clem North had their first meeting of the year, and they're in their membership drive, and I would encourage all board members to join PTSA, either at the school year liaison for or through the central. They certainly do provide a great deal for our students and our families. They also do have a series of workshops that they'll be holding in conjunction with their PTSA meetings, and I look forward to attending several of those. I'm sure I'm overlooking something, but the primary issue, I think, is encouraging you to join PTSA.
Thank you, Anne. Mike, anything to report at this time? Tom?
The first PTSA meeting at State Road next week. Thank you.
Paul?
Clem South has a couple of curriculum nights. One is tonight, next week, Monday, and a roller skating party coming up on the twenty-third. PTSA Welcome Back Meeting is on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, from seven to eight P.M.
Thank you. Sue?
I attended the Schlegel PTSA meeting last Tuesday, and there was over thirty people. Very well attended, and it basically was a planning meeting and finalizing the budget for the year. Also, big, a big push for, to get people to join the PTSA as well, and their first fundraiser is on October eighth, and it's a chicken barbecue.
All right, I would like to make sure that we have the next two weeks covered. On Monday, September twenty-second, there's the Plank South PTSA, and who is, Anne, you're going to that one. Also, on Monday, the twenty-second, is the State Road PTSA. Tom, you've got that covered. Great. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, the Clem South PTSA, you've got that one covered. Okay. On, well, Friday, there's the football game, marching band. Yep, yep. On Wednesday, October first, Plank North. Were you able to make that? If you can't...
What day?
It's Wednesday. I can make it if you can't.
I was going to do, I was going to do it because it's a Wednesday. Mike can't do Wednesdays.
I haven't done one yet, so...
Okay, if you would like, you'll take it.
I'll do the Plank North.
Very good.
Who's going to the WT executive board? Is it just me? Anne?
I have it as well.
Okay.
Unless you don't, how many people do you want?
They invited the entire board. It's Monday, October sixth, at four-thirty.
Oh, four-thirty?
Yep.
At the Thomas Library.
Where is it?
Thomas Library.
Okay. Tuesday, October seventh, is a SEPTA meeting.
I'm going to go to that.
You're going to that one. Also, on Tuesday, October seventh, is the WEN movie screening of Girl Rising. I can make that.
Yeah, I was going to... What day is that?
Well, you're going to SEPTA.
Oh.
So it's the same night. So we got that covered. On Wednesday, October eighth, there's Coco with the principal at Spry. I can make that. Same day, Coffee with the Principal at Willink. Can't be in two places at once. Can anybody make?
It's in the, it's in the daytime. It's nine-thirty. I have an eight-thirty commitment on that morning, so I won't be able to make it.
All right, so...
Maybe we flip-flop.
Yeah, we'll go, I'll hit Spry, and Willink will just... Sorry, Willink. Oh, maybe, no, Fritz couldn't make it either. Also, that night, Clem South has a PTSA family literacy night. Is anyone interested in that?
Is that the eighth?
On the October eighth.
It's a Wednesday night.
We have executives, so we can't make that.
I could do that. It is interesting.
Well, you don't have to, but it's a good idea that you do.
Monroe County School Board Executive Committee.
October eighth.
Yeah, sorry, Anne, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay. So I'll do the literacy night.
Okay, thank you.
I do have it on my calendar.
And the last one of the two-week period is, this is always a great thing to watch the kids. If it's not raining, October ninth, is the orienteering at Webster Park for the fifth graders. It starts like at nine o'clock in the morning or nine-thirty.
It is.
Yes. Roughly, you know, it's, they all... Yep, I'm going to try to make that.
And actually, there is the fun run at North Pond's.
Right, did I leave that out?
You did.
I'm sorry.
And that's... It's on the twenty-sixth.
That's the twenty-sixth. That's a week from Friday, and I was going to stop there as well.
Okay. So we've got, we've got most of that covered. Great. So moving to the Monroe County School Boards Association. There was no steering committee report, because we gave it to you last week. Legislative, anything from legislative?
I think we reported on that last month as well.
So information sharing. Dr. Whitney, who's Director of Pupil Services for the Churchville Child Life School District, presented on the cost drivers related to services for pupils with disabilities, and she reported that New York State has two-hundred-and-eleven more requirements than the federal government does, and most of these are unfunded. She also gave the committee an overview of the legal case decisions that were behind the cost drivers, and she did provide some suggestions in regard to these cost drivers, which I believe should be a topic for a future workshop, because they, they're interesting. They're interesting, at least to consider. Our next information exchange, you'll have to wait, because I think we're changing the topic. It will be Wednesday, October eighth, at noon. Okay, any, oh, Fritz is not here, so we don't have anything from Labor. So we'll move into the New York State School Boards. Anything from you, Tom?
Nothing to report, except the convention coming up, and we have our attendees.
Okay.
We're all set, we're all registered.
Please remember that on October second, we are having an audit report, and we expect the board to be there.
What day was that?
October second. It's the third, it's before our meeting.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah, oh, I got it, I got it.
Okay. Sue, anything on policy?
I just wanted to talk to Anne. It's Anne, Tom, and myself, and Brian. Is that correct?
It's Mike.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry, it's Mike. So I'll have Cindy set up our first meeting, but we need to know when it can be. Can it be in the day at all, Mike, for you or no?
For me, it's really hard.
Okay.
I don't care when, but...
Not in the day?
Either early morning, or...
Like, what do you mean by early morning?
I don't get up early this day, so...
What do you mean by early morning?
Seven-thirty.
It's all perspective.
It's all relative.
Or we can do it evening. Daytime's really hard to make.
Okay, what, Brian is... Whatever is fine. I think evening's better. Can you do like, like six-thirty-ish?
Yeah.
All right. What nights are good for everybody? Is Tuesday decent? We can try to back up to board meetings, and then if not, we'll do Tuesdays. Okay. So I'll talk to you, and we'll figure something out, and then we'll send out a email and get our first meeting set up. We're only going to have four meetings this year. And we'll start the first one in November.
Okay, so anything on strategic planning, or is that still...
Actually, we have our first meeting set with the core team on October sixteenth, and they also sent a, Cindy graciously sent out a letter to the entire team, letting them know that we are meeting, so that we're getting moving again.
Anne, I think you told us, oh, yes.
Well, I got a question, because you write this budget, and I think it is that we thought about moving off the starting earlier this year, and I'm thinking, what are we looking at, like November, putting stuff together for strategic...
No, because Brian would have to sort of leave that, and he'll be on the job for approximately six days before.
So we're going to put it off until after?
Give us, give us some time.
Sue, Tom, anything to report on SEPTA, although there is a SEPTA meeting coming up?
SEPTA meeting's coming up shortly, the first one.
October seventh, which you just mentioned.
Okay. All right, board members, you've had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda, which consists of the superintendent's recommendations for the minutes... consists of the superintendent's recommendations for the minutes and personnel actions, and the Committee on Special Education, as well as the Committee on Preschool Education, and also there are bids for athletic uniforms. Are there any questions? May we have then a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
A second, please, Paul, thank you, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With that being said, I'm just going to point out to you that we have our next board meeting on Thursday, October 2nd, 7 o'clock here in the Spry auditorium, and may we have a motion for adjournment, please? Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.